Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, October 25th. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dungus?
Here.
Mr. Gothard?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Ella?
Here.
We have one item on the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes. All right, and then we have minutes from September 27th, but we don't have the right combination of members here. So we'll skip over that. And then we'll go to our one case on the agenda tonight, a public hearing for land use plan. Case two dash twenty twenty-one L U P. This plan is for the Anderson Township Public Art Master Plan filed by Anderson Township Board of Township Trustees. The Public Art Master Plan and Appendix creates a policy and guideline for acquiring, maintaining, and strategically implementing art in Anderson Township. And Ms. Donovan is presenting on this this evening.
Thank you, Zoning Commission. The request in front of you is for a recommendation to the Board of Township Trustees approving the Anderson Township Public Art Master Plan and Appendix. The adoption of the study was initiated by the Board of Trustees in early October. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan update in the Quality of Life section called to promote a variety of arts and cultural programs as well as venues to encourage performances. As well as an initiative of the We Thrive Anderson 2019-2020 Action Plan. The idea for an art plan was originally inspired by the Betterment and Beautification Committee and advanced by the We Thrive Anderson Committee. An RFP for a consultant was released in 2020 with two submittals received. The plan was postponed in 2020 due to COVID-19, and in 2021, the process was restarted. So in the spring of 2021, the We Thrive Anderson Committee created a subcommittee of eight trustee-appointed volunteers as well as a trustee liaison. From the submitted responses of the RFP, interviews were conducted and Designing Local was selected by the trustees. They're a national firm but based out of Columbus, Ohio. Beginning with bi-monthly meetings with the We Thrive Anderson Art Plan Subcommittee, the vision statement was formed with feedback from a community survey focusing on community treasures. In addition, Designing Local held over fifty stakeholder interviews with those recommended by staff and the Subcommittee. And then on June 29th, 2021, two public engagement sessions were held at Julif's Park. One in the late morning and one in the afternoon. The purpose of these were to engage residents in an open dialogue about where they would like to see art in Anderson Township, as well as what type of art. An open house was held at the Anderson Center on September 13th, 2021 to view and ask questions regarding the draft Public Art Master Plan. And it's been posted on our website since September 13th. The plan summary, the purpose of the Anderson Township Public Art Master Plan and Appendix are to define and expand art within the township. The planning document focuses on a vision for public art establishment of an art program in potential growth, action plan, and potential projects for the township. The guiding principles for art in the document include creating a strong sense of place that provides opportunities for community interaction. Celebrate accessibility, inclusivity, and representation within the community. Enhance assets such as parks, corridors, and commercial spaces. Strengthen the brand and identity of Anderson Township. And support the high quality of life in Anderson Township by injecting creativity and inspiring new ideas. So pairing the planning document with a policy document such as the appendix creates a framework for the execution of public art within the township. Including locations, types of projects, as well as potential for funding opportunities each year. There were four example projects within the Chapter Four. Which include natural sculptures on Anderson Trails, the Kellogg Road Gateway, an Anderson Sculpture Tour, as well as Anderson Bikes Bike Grex. Then the appendix provides a guideline and requirements for the development of an annual Public Art Work Plan. The funding and acquisition of public art, the selection of artists and artwork. The implementation and conservation of the Anderson Public Art Collection. While the intent of the appendix is that Anderson Township Public Art Program is implemented in a fair and consistent manner that enables a community-oriented artistically creative process and promotes the cultural aesthetic and economic vitality of Anderson. So following, the Board of Township Trustees will have the responsibility of reviewing and approving the annual Public Art Work Plan as prepared by staff, including appropriations. If adopted, the Public Art Master Plan will be incorporated into the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Update. So the next slides kind of go into the four projects that were highlighted in the planning document. And we can go into these further if you'd like, or I am able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Would the board like Ms. Donovan to go into more detail on this? Or would you like to just, as she is giving us an option, to just pose questions to her about it?
I have questions. We can keep it informal and just go through them or go through it sequentially by section and see if other people have questions. I'm open.
Okay, everybody seems okay. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Everybody seems, on the board I'm hearing, would just like to maybe jump into questions of you. And Ms. Donovan is prepared to answer those, I'm sure, having put a lot of work into this. Would somebody like to go first? Mr. Lewis, you want to jump in?
Sure.
Okay.
First off, I enjoyed the plan. Looks like you or you and the consultant designing local put some thought into it. My initial broad strokes are, you know, art's a tough thing to quantify based on who's observing it and critiquing it. My issue's always with the public spend, be it TIF funds or whatever, and how to do it. Always I would encourage donations, things of that sort. Something that came to mind, it's sort of at the, one of your first ones is at the, coming into Kellogg in 275, that's where Summer Fair is every year. It's a nice gateway that maybe you could dovetail something with Summer Fair. You know, it's known for their arts and crafts and their T-shirt designs and whatnot. Maybe something can piggyback that, that people could, there's a lot of sculptures down there. I know from personal experience at Summer Fair. That maybe somebody could put something on loan for a year and do it rotating, give them free publicity at that there, at the, again, the gateway. Some of the other areas that you had where you wanted to put them, I had issues or questions about our ability to, for example, Hamilton County Parks. Even though it's within the Anderson boundaries, we don't have much to do about that. The same with murals on private businesses and things like that.
So.
We have plenty of opportunities with the Anderson Township own facilities and probably partnering with the school district. I know like at Air School, they have one of the pigs on the entry. I know here we have a pig here at the entry.
Can I touch on the Great Parks one?
Sure.
So Great Parks was actually one of our stakeholders. So we held a, kind of a focus group with eight members of their staff, including representatives from Woodland Mound and Withrow Nature Preserve. And they are currently working on their Comprehensive Plan Update for all of the parks. And in that includes building a new facility at Withrow Nature Preserve, or, I'm sorry, at Woodland Mound.
Yeah, Withrow, there's just a private house right now.
Correct, correct. So it involves an overlook at Woodland Mound.
Okay.
And they are looking at different types of art that could potentially go in there already. So kind of partnering with them on potential projects that they might include in that.
Would that be within their peer view and their budget versus ours?
Yes.
Okay.
It seems like it at this point.
It'd be great to partner with some continuity between whatever theme or whatever, and that was one of my other points, when you had examples in here. I know Cincinnati had the pig years ago. People have done cows, people have done all different things, different cities. Fort Collins, Colorado has pianos, operational upright pianos scattered around the city and need people to sit down and play. It's a great concept, but I think we should do whatever, you know, whatever Anderson's known for or what we want to be known for from an art standpoint. But my biggest thing is if you can find money outside, matching funds, private donations. Whenever you, I think, and this is a broad assessment, if you spend public money, you open up yourself to a lot of, on both sides, people loving it, people not loving it, and a lot of pushback. So, that'd be my two cents, or 10% or 1% or whatever.
Awesome, thank you. Well, we'll just go down the aisle, okay? Mr. Gothard, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Donovan, I mean, in the appendix it talks about different funding sources. Is there any more definitive information on the funding sources?
So at this point, no, this is kind of where we are. But I can say that with grants, we have struggled in the past to get grants for sculptures and murals because we didn't have this document. We've applied a couple of times for artworks, murals, and because we didn't have something that said Anderson supports art, we got a lot of pushback. So we think that this document will really help us with grant funding for different projects that way.
And then how does this interact with the current zoning regulations as far as, you know, what's sign, what's art, what's a mural, what's a sign?
Yep.
Come to the mind is the Skyline Chili, you know, where they did, you know, two murals, but they speak to signage almost. How does this all work together that one will support the other but not, you know, detrimental for the zoning commission?
Yeah, so in 2019, we had several text amendments go through, including murals, non-commercial signage. It was in the same batch as the Airbnb text amendment and short-term rentals. So in that, we defined that the difference between a mural and a sign, and it kind of separated the two. So as long as your mural does not have your business logo in it, or is not promoting your business specifically, it's considered a mural. So if the Skyline one didn't say Skyline Chili across the top and was just the skyline of the business, it would count as a mural rather than extra signage.
And then how about height restrictions and front yards and things like that? How does it interface with any sort of restriction for that?
In terms of private residences?
Or business residences, or, you know, setbacks, things like that.
I'm not sure at this time.
Okay. I mean, that's something I think, you know, if it's going to be rolled in the Comprehensive Plan that we look at.
Mm-hmm.
Right, how they interface, which one controls, and what sort of other restrictions or regulations may be layered on top of the artwork.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. That's the only questions or comments I had. Thank you very much. It was great, great reading.
Thank you, Mr. Gothard. Mr. Dungus, what do you say?
I guess I just want to clarify the process. So the trustees initiated this process. It was then developed by the staff and this consultant, and now it's before us for review. Does it still then go back to the trustees for approval?
Yes, so.
That's it, comes through here, okay.
Yes, so land use plans are kind of a reverse than like a zone change. So you start here, it gets initiated by the trustees, but then it comes to Zoning Commission, then it goes to the trustees again, and then it goes to regional planning at Hamilton County, and that's the final step.
Okay. And then, if this is all approved as it currently is written, and things start moving forward. The process for funding, there are multiple avenues of funding listed in the document. Is it then, you know, the document, the appendix has also talked about how projects are proposed. So then there's a plan put together for the next year, is that correct?
Yes.
That the trustees would then approve, and funding would already be allocated, or do they try to allocate the funding? I'm trying to figure out how the funding part works.
I think we would need to allocate for the first year because like the 2022 budget is already being approved by the trustees. So kind of allocating for 2023 is where I think we would land.
Do they have some discretionary, it's probably a question for the trustees, though, in their 2022 budget, there's probably a discretionary line that they could pull from because of the nature, right?
Yeah.
As sort of a, this is starting out, seed money, I'd call it.
Well, and under the We Thrive Committee, there's a line item for community art projects.
Okay.
So it could come out of the We Thrive budget as well.
But it's not gonna, I guess what I'm curious and or concerned about, it's not going to create a future commitment of any sort?
No. The trustees have to decide on that.
Gotcha. And then it talks about a selection committee.
Mm-hmm.
So will they be, the selection committee will help identify the artist and the art. Who has like the final approval on what it looks like?
So how the consultant has described it to us is that we're selecting an artist based on their portfolio of work. And then from there, we would give the scope. So if we don't want any words, any human figures, anything like that, we would give them the scope. And then they would design something, and the trustees would have final say. But we're looking at the selection committee as being the property owner and then within 200 feet of the property, similar to how we do our notices for zoning commission.
Okay, so maybe you just answered my next question and I catch it off. So it also, it talked about public notice. Meetings, times, locations, posted on township website and Anderson Center. Will there also be like a sign, physical sign put in the ground near where this would go for neighbors that may not be regularly checking the website?
I'm not sure about a sign, but we were planning on doing the mailings, exactly like how we do our public hearing notices.
Okay. And then, last question, I think. It talked about multiple selection methods for selecting the artists. Who decides what selection method gets used? Because some of them were like direct, like just go and hire a specific artist versus like an open bid for them.
It would probably depend on the dollar amount that we have as well as the project that we're looking at. But ultimately, I think the trustees would, either the staff are presenting to the trustees.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, I'll go ahead and go next. And I'm going to be kind of the wet blanket in this because the plan is terrific and the idea of public art is a great idea. I mean, when I think of places I've visited and what's memorable about them, it's some of the public art that you see around. So I really do like the idea of having something that promotes public art. However, I'm quite uncomfortable with how it's presented in this plan, in particular in the appendix. Which I do believe mandates certain budget items and costs. For example, it talks about allocation of 2% of TIF funds. It talks about a specific budget line item for this. And I have concerns about that. And committing, even though it's in a plan, it's not in a resolution, it's committing, a plan commits to policy. And this is committing to funding things that are not really part of a core service that a township normally provides. Not saying that it's not important. It really is important. I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with some of the, maybe mandates is a little too strong a word, but what I'm seeing in the appendix. About budgeting, budget line items, specific callouts of paying from the general fund for this. The township incurring partial costs like putting in foundations and stuff like that. I do not feel comfortable saying that that is something the township would be undertaking. So, secondly, I'm concerned about the amount of staff work. It appears that this plan would propose from review of projects to a mandate that annually a plan is put together. To specific callouts of staff evaluating things. It looked like there was a tremendous amount of work that would be, go into this plan as written. So I have concerns about that. And generally speaking, I would say this, this type of plan and with this kind of level of detail would something I would expect more of a private or community foundation to spearhead. Rather than, you know, a, a public body such as the township. So it even talked about dedicating a percentage of the park district funds to this. So there's, so, so all that aside, if you read the document, it talks about approvals and it talks about approvals by the township. It talks about approvals by staff. It talks about approvals by committee. And quite frankly, I get a little bit nervous when we start talking about approving objects. Whether they're murals or artwork or something like that, because I think that can create some conflict. So I'm not sure that's a spot that the township government wants to put itself in as opposed to maybe partnering with, with a foundation. And then lastly, all of that aside, I would, I'm not a big fan of murals. And I'm really not a fan of what it talked about there, of the township getting public easements to put public murals on private property. I'm completely uncomfortable with that idea. And I'm not a big fan of murals in general because I think the message gets lost and deteriorates over time. So I would like to see if there is something that'd be more sculpture, sculptures and stuff like that. Thank you.
And if I could add on to the chair's point, I also, the 1% stipulation on like developers, that seemed to be a little bit of like more of a tax that would add to the cost. May, I don't know what the consultants thought with, was this 1% a benchmark with other cities? Does that make us uncompetitive in an apples-to-apples world? I'm not sure what they said. And then the, there was a, just a statement, I don't know what page it was on, about unused funds are rolled over. That normally doesn't happen in fiscal years. Usually it's use it or lose it type. Unless you had like a long-term project that took an 18-month, two-year development or something like that, then I would understand that. And then you would pay as you go a percentage, but to say if you don't spend $100,000, next year we have $200,000. It's, that's going to be a slippery slope, so just wanted to add that on.
Any other remarks from the board members or questions?
Can you speak to what the competitors or the other, what they said they did in other cities?
Yeah, so there, a lot of cities do a 2% actually for public art. So reducing it to one, we thought we were coming in under what the norm is. Like the city of Cincinnati has a 2%.
It is voluntary, right?
It is voluntary.
Not a requirement, but may help push your plan along if you do it.
That's, that's a good point. That's what I was going with. It's nice to have aspiration to 2%, but mandating a 1%.
Actually, is that, is that language in the actual appendix or is it in this other, the other, the master?
I think it's in the appendix.
Is it? I saw in the master plan document.
The 1% for the core, for the developers is on page 16, I've explained it.
Thank you.
And it's, it's pretty strong. Like I, I'm not going to go through everything I marked, but I just, here's, here's something on page two of the appendix. The Anderson Board of Trustees has the following responsibilities. So it's not like, it's not saying it's like optional, okay? It says they have, if they adopt this policy, it says they have this responsibility. Review and approve the annual public art work plan as prepared, including appropriations, which means money, right? During the annual budgeting meeting for public art. So that's just, that's pretty strong language for a plan, you know? Usually a plan is like, and I get, I get why the appendix is important because it's like, because if you didn't have the appendix, everybody'd say, well, how are you going to do this? You know, so I do really admire, you know, the thought that went into it, it's like, well, here's how we can fund, you know? Here's what shall be done. I just think it's a little bit, I think it's kind of a little bit over the top with some of these mandates that I'm seeing incorporated into this. And then what, what happens is if this plan is adopted, then it does, I think, put the trustees. Right, we all know budgeting is discretionary. I can give the roads department so much funds that they ask for or I don't have to. But I do think it would put the trustees on their heels a little bit if somebody's, if, if I came in everywhere, I highlighted a funding provision in here. And there's probably at least 10 solid things in here about, that are strongly worded, about 2% of this, you know, in the budget, an annual plan. I think it's, I think it's too strong. I really do. I think it gives them, I think we can have a plan that furthers art. Mentions how it's appropriate, that can then help Sarah and Paul and Brad get funding. Because they can say, we've got a great plan here that supports it and promotes it without kind of, you know, I think it kind of, without being so strong as I'm, I'm seeing here. I'm just a little uncomfortable.
What would it, would, would it lose all the meat on the, if we said that, changed things that they shall do this versus they, they, you know, they may do this versus they shall do this? You know what I'm saying? Make it optional with the desire to do it, but again, going back to a mandate and a set percentage.
And I, I read it sort of in a different sort of context. You know, if the trustees do not approve or, you know, put something forth in that following budget. You know, it could be zero, it could be $10. You know, how do you actually, you know, put that in a line item budget if they don't approve it? And, and that's where I was reading a lot of the words. And, you know, the 1%, yes, I saw that was voluntary, you know? I didn't see anything that said somebody has to give a set percentage. I did see the trustees have to approve a plan for the following year. But, you know, I don't think that sort of mandates it. It approves a plan or a pathway that can always be altered. You know, through the course of a daily activities or maybe another vote. You know, I, I do, I like that there is some structure in there, that there is multiple approvals or different committees, not just a sole, single source of committee or approval. So I read it in Brian, a little bit of different context than I think you did.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I guess what I'm thinking is, hearing the discussion today, maybe we ask for further feedback from the township? To come back the next month's meeting rather than taking a vote yes or no, would be sort of mine is, you know, let's get a little bit more definition of what they mean by mandate or approval. And that could be in the appendix or a supplement to the appendix for final approval.
Yeah, I would support Jonathan in that if we could see a change of some of the language to soften it or make it less, you know, again, using the word mandate. And if you did that, highlight those different, those changes from version one to version two or whatever versions. See if that changes our tone or how we proceed.
to see if that changes our tone or how we perceive it. We all want to, you know, make sure we're on a united front as far as our understanding. Last thing we want to do is have the trustees come back and say, "What'd you mean by this?" I'd better have a pretty tight language.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, I agree with that. I would, I think I was generally a little confused on whether these were mandates or options. I mean, it does say there are many options, resources of funding, and then it goes through and says, uses words like "shall."
Right.
So I think just a clear list of the options that could be used would be helpful.
Yeah, I like Mr. Lewis's thought about, yeah, here's a thing on funding, highlighted it, here's maybe a proposed change.
Okay. So just to confirm, we're looking for changes in some of the languages about "shall," "may", those sorts of things in terms of funding?
The intent is to give everyone some room. We all want, we all want the art, we just don't want to be forced. We don't have to be forced upon us, right?
Got it.
Or forced to like, "Well, hey, I've got $100,000, I gotta go spend it by this date, and we had to get it through," type thing. It's, it's well thought out in the design, it's just some of the semantics that is in the document, I think, can reflect better our intent to make this a, a program here, everyone wants to do it, and then feel like they have to do it.
And here's just a thought too, and I'm not saying to do this necessarily, but maybe, maybe think about having the master plan go through. Well, it's really the, the nuts and bolts of how you make it happen. That should be something I'm not sure we need to get into right now. I mean, you have this document as a guide. So if, if the township adopts a plan, it's like, "We're in favor of public art, there's a lot of different funding opportunities, we're in favor of exploring those and having that." I'm not sure the zoning commission, or, or even the trustees at this point, need to say, "And you have to do 2% of TIF and 1% of this." That's just options you can look at, and, you know, it's kind of like a code of regulations, right? That's something that you adopt later to get the nuts and bolts of how you get to accomplishing your policy of, "Wouldn't it be cool to have some, you know, art sculpture up there?" So maybe, that's just a thought too, maybe pull out the appendix out of that. That's going to be a guide for how you want to do it, but maybe not part of the plan necessarily. It's like, here's some suggestions from the consultant. That's a thought. I'm not saying we have to do that necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have as much issue with how the sausage was made. It was just a type of sausage.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want a motion or something to maybe table that, based on those, based on feedback? And we'll take a look at this again next month, or when you feel prepared to bring it to us?
Okay.
I'll make, make a motion to table case 2-2021 LUP to, for the township, provide more information for the comments made tonight to the commission for future consideration.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? Roll call, please. Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Donovan, is there anything else for us to do tonight?
That was it.
Okay, anything else?
This will come next month?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be looking at this next month, okay? Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.
No, seriously, thanks.